All right, Commissioners, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's our Committee of the Whole meeting, and to start us off before we get to our agenda items, we, I'm going to invite James Hurt to come forward and share with us a recent award that we received, the 2017 Excellence in Recycling Award. So, welcome, James.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to pass this around if I can get over there.
Ash trees?
What I'm passing around is the 2017 Governor's
Thank you.
Excellence in Recycling Award granted to the City of Grand Rapids. You may recall, we started a program last year in partnership with Art Prize, WHEMIAK, the Kent County DPW, and the Image Shop to look at a special events program. And we came up with a sorting station concept. And I gave you a handout from last year, and it was really a unique program. And what we wanted to do was build consistency, standardization, branding, the same colors that people would see when they came to our special events. So during that partnership, we came up with this sorting station concept with the colors, and we kind of launched it last summer at a couple of events, and then we really rolled it out at Art Prize. We had six stations out in the community, and WHEMIAK was a great partner as they pulled together almost 200 volunteers to man these stations throughout the duration of Art Prize. And as you know, that's a 19-day event, approximately 400,000 people coming through our downtown. And what they did was they handed literature out, they helped people understand what to put in the right container to try to promote recycling, and make sure that they're, you know, putting trash where trash goes, putting plastic where it goes. And it was a great experience. We learned a lot, and it was kind of a human-centered design approach, if I could use that term, and very successful. But what you have there is the award from the Governor, and I just wanted to mention a couple of folks who were part of our team. Amelia Pegman and Derek Call from Art Prize, I don't think they're here. Rachel Hood and Bill Wood and Anne Marie Hurdle from WHEMIAK, this is before Rachel actually left, she was part of this. Kristen Whelan from the Kent County DPW, and from the Image Shop, Rob McCarty, Emily Heames, and Lisa Marks, I think I got that right. So it was really a team effort, and we submitted a nomination to the Governor's office for new and enhanced recycling program, and I'm pleased to tell you, we received that. We were five, one of five in the state that received them. And I want to just talk briefly, Mayor, if I might. This is made out of recycled material. So the stone base is cut from marble salvage from a former Detroit Fire Department headquarters. The wood body is created from four-by-four salvage through a deconstruction of early 1900-built homes from Detroit. And the wood medallion is laser engraved and crafted from unique wood species used in subfloor material in a home located in the Brightmore neighborhood of Detroit. So every year, they pass out these awards, and they're all made out of some form of recycled material, and I'm very pleased to be here today to present that to you.
Great. Thank you, and congratulations. Thanks, James. And I have to say, I think this is, this is the kind of thing that happens when you bring together great partners, including the talent and creativity of someone like, I should say, the team at Image Shop. So thanks so much for all of your help with this, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, that's next going to take us to our agenda, and I am going to switch the agenda around a little bit. So sorry, City Clerk, I didn't give you a heads-up on this. We have a Commissioner who needs to leave no later than 10:30, so I want to make sure that we get to some key resolutions before she has to leave. So Commissioner Lanier has to leave. And so I'm going to switch it around a little bit, and we're going to start with item four, actually, and then I'm going to go down to five, and then back up to two, or I guess I could do two first. And then we'll do the budget before going back up to the first and second resolution. So first up, and I saw David De Valder here, okay, and Jono, I'm going to go first to the resolution. So this is Committee of the Whole, item number four, and this is a resolution approving the acquisition of the 2017 Kent County Tax Foreclosure properties for a transfer to the Kent County Land Bank Authority and other matters that are related to this. So can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, and so, Jono, I know you've worked really hard on this. We've made some changes this year based on feedback from the Commission.
Based on, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this vote, and I believe based on our conflict of interest, I actually have to remove myself from the dais.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
During the discussion, so I'm going to go back to my office and close the door so I can't hear anything.
All right. And then, but City Attorney, then, when I call for the vote, he has to cast an abstention, correct? Does he have to be present to do that?
He doesn't, oops. He doesn't have to leave, just as in, he has to stay.
Okay. All right. So yeah, why don't you go ahead and dismiss, and then we'll call you back in.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so Commissioners, now that this is on the floor, a couple of things about this. Jono's been working really hard, as has the Land Bank, in listening to feedback from the community and concerns, but also from this table about our commitment to affordable housing. So in this resolution, there are some changes compared to what we approved last year. So I'm just going to hand it over to Jono to explain those. And then, David, if there are any questions, you're welcome to come up and add if you'd like.
Very good, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the annual resolution that's consistent with City Commission Policy 944, which is to acquire all of the tax-foreclosed properties in Grand Rapids and convey them to the Kent County Land Bank Authority. In addition, this year, as the Mayor said, there are some changes. So in addition, there is a development agreement, we've done that before, there's a development agreement between the city and the Land Bank. And then new this year is a guidance document that would supplement City Commission Policy 944. And I'll go into the details of that in just a second. A little bit of background, we began this partnership with the Land Bank in 2013. The housing market, as you are well aware, has changed significantly in 2013. There were 162 tax-foreclosed properties, there's been a reduction each year, and this year, we estimate there will only be 29. 29 properties. There are 21 additional properties that could become tax-foreclosed on July 1st. So consistent with the city priorities and the public purpose that's required by this transaction, the intent is to utilize our partnership with the Land Bank to stabilize neighborhoods, encourage the expeditious return of property to productive use, promote economic growth, preserve property values, and preserve neighborhood character. In addition, consistent with city commission priorities, community priorities, and the Housing Advisory Committee, affordable housing is a priority this year as well. Requirements from previous years still hold, including that the Land Bank must return these properties to private use within 18 months. In addition, this year, there are requirements related to the nonprofits' work with the Land Bank. So between the guidance document that's in your agenda packet and the development agreement, nonprofits requesting properties from the Land Bank will be required to provide affordable housing, which is defined as 80% available to households at 80% AMI or less for homeownership. A nonprofit must have secured and readily available financing to complete a project that they're proposing, and they must not have other property in their inventory as well that could be used for that funding. The Land Bank, in addition, will provide affordable housing with the remainder of the properties that they're going to repurpose, so that again is 80% AMI for homeownership. There are a couple multifamily properties which they will list for homeownership for 20 days. And then further, for all properties, regardless of who redevelops them, lead-safe work practices are required in this agreement, and that will be evidenced by lead clearances for interior and exterior inspections completed by state-certified inspectors. So in summary, this resolution approves the development agreement, approves the guidance document, approves acquisition of the properties and the transfer to the Land Bank. The Land Bank also will pay any outstanding nuisance and water fees associated with the properties. The estimated cost is approximately $436,000 this year. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jono. Commissioners, I should point out that the recommendation about lead-safe work practices, we've, we've done that for a long time, I'm looking at David, at the Land Bank, but this was a specific recommendation that came out of the recent recommendations from the Kent County Work Group that looked at the Land Bank. So we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge those recommendations and build them into the, into the principles that we're reviewing today. I don't want it to seem like we haven't done that in the past, but we're just making it very clear that that's the expectation from this body, that that be included, and again, it's aligned with the recommendation from the county. David, do you, do you want to come up just in case Commissioners have questions? So Jono, why don't you stay too, and I'll turn to my colleagues for questions. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank you for the presentation, the hard work that you do in the Land Bank, and for the emphasis on affordable housing, which is certainly in need right now, and a priority of the Commission as well. A couple of questions. One, that third bullet, that the nonprofit does not otherwise have property available that could reasonably be utilized for the proposed project with the secured funding, can you elaborate on that, what that means? I wasn't sure if it meant if they have other, other property or houses that need to be fixed up?
Sure. An example could be where, where funding that's obtained is specifically for redevelopment of an existing structure, and if, if a nonprofit has a vacant property, then that funding would not be able to be utilized, for instance. But if they did have a structure that needed rehabilitation, the priority would be to get that property that they already own rehabilitated instead of adding to their inventory.
Okay.
I think, I think that, from what I understand, is that, you know, knowing that the development cycle can often be long.
Right.
That, to ensure that these park, these properties get back to market in an efficient timeframe, that we don't saddle additional burden when projects are sitting there not being completed because the development cycle is long.
Right.
So making sure that they have the financial ability to complete projects so that we get them back to activated rather than give, put another project, put another project on the hopper that doesn't get developed for a year, or two, or three, and again, then we're not accomplishing our goal of seeing these properties back to productivity to contribute positively to, you know, the neighborhood.
Well, that's exactly what I was asking about, but I also don't want to hamstring them if they've got things in progress. So I'm not sure how that, if that goes back to the board for further review, or how that works.
Could you, could you repeat that last part?
I'm not sure with that, with that situation perhaps where they are, you know, they're, they're, for some reason, something is held up, but it's legitimate, and if that goes back to the board, just to get a sense of how long that project's going to take to get completed. I don't want to put them in a position where they're not able to keep moving or sustain their operations either.
Sure. I think the goal between the city, the Land Bank, and all of the nonprofits is to get as many properties redeveloped as quickly as possible. And so we're going to work collaboratively to determine who can accomplish what within what timeframes. And so the Land Bank will be able to utilize its processes to get properties that the nonprofits don't acquire back on the market very quickly.
Right.
And so we're going to make sure that if a nonprofit's going to be acquiring property, that they're going to be able to start redevelopment very soon.
Yeah, and my understanding, it's related to assessing capacity.
It is to a certain point, to a certain extent, financial capacity as well, yeah.
Commissioner Lanier?
Oh, just a follow-up, thank you, Mayor.
And then Commissioner Lanier.
So this is, this is a new policy that's in place, and I assume, and have they had a chance, have the nonprofits had a chance to review it?
Yes, they have. It is a guidance document that would supplement the City Commission policy, that provides those details. I've worked with all the nonprofits, they're aware of it, they're supportive of this approach, and they're very comfortable with it.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Commissioner?
So I'm, I'm curious about the unintended consequences. So do we know, have we taken a look at the various nonprofit providers to see who would we exclude immediately? Because I think about, like, the larger ones, they have, normally they're acquiring a lot of land to do bigger projects, and sometimes that takes years because of being able to get funding for those projects. So are we saying that that would automatically exclude them, and then if that's the case, and the smaller ones may not necessarily have the capacity to take on too many of these? So then, you know, if all of that is the case, then we're probably not accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish. So I think there needs to be some type of a hybrid there, and I think it should be something that, that is explicitly explained here, because if it isn't, then we'll have subjective practices trying to address those individual case-by-case issues. And I think if we put something in place to try and juggle some of the unintended consequences now, it'll prevent us from having to do that, and then having some developer, nonprofit developers saying to us, "We weren't treated fairly."
Well, and maybe David can speak too. We've been at the Land Bank working with nonprofits to, to review the internal policy and working with nonprofits, and David, maybe you can talk a little bit about that work that's happened.
Well, first of all, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mayor, please. As far as nonprofits, you know, having worked at nonprofits for many years, you know, we've, we've done everything we can to make sure that we provide opportunities for them first and foremost before the general public even receives the list. So they always have the first look at the list, and we've provided them opportunities. Some nonprofits, like Habitat, extensive opportunities for redevelopment with our Demogrant and such. So no one is excluded, it's just we have an 18-month guideline for completion, and, you know, that's, that's really a realistic goal, and a lot of the nonprofits, the majority have always completed their projects. Within that, we've had a few exceptions because of funding delays and getting projects set up for public funding, that always tends to delay things a little bit, and they have additional requirements, so we keep that in mind. We can always make exceptions, but the general rule is 18 months, so.
So maybe, David, if I can interrupt for just a sec, I think you may have cleared something up for me. So are we only talking about funding or, or properties that the Land Bank has provided? We're not talking about their entire portfolio?
Correct.
Correct.
And I think the reason why Jono had the statement in there about that they need to have dedicated funding for our projects, just when they bring in their funding each year, we just want to make sure that the funding that is for our houses is dedicated to those houses, that we're just a little more clear about that, because we just don't want to have any delays, and, you know, obviously, we have a lot of home buyers that are wanting properties, and this year, with affordability restriction, we really want to make sure that those are delivered as quickly as possible. And we are intending, because the entire list is, is affordable this year, we just want to, we want to get homeowners in houses as quickly as possible, so, but also do a good job. We know the nonprofits do amazing work, and we're going to, you know, we're going to provide those opportunities and study it carefully, and the city will be helping with that this year.
So I, I wholeheartedly agree, now that I recognize that you're only specifically talking about Land Bank properties that they have. So that makes sense to me now. I think we should.
Clarification.
Yeah, thank you. And I think we should monitor just to make sure 18 months is enough time, or if it isn't too much time, you know, since this is something new. But this, thank you for leading into that, that was one of my questions. My second question is, I am an advocate for ownership, homeownership, as well as business ownership, but I also think about the people who frequently attend our City Commission meetings and talking about having access to rental properties that they can afford because they're not in a position to purchase their own home. And so I'm wondering, how can we figure out, because I think this is creative to, to make sure, number one, that we're making all of these properties affordable, but how else can we kind of address the issue for those who are coming saying, "I'm homeless, and I need a place to rent," or, "The rent is too high." So is there a way for us to do an affordable partnership to get rental properties as well? Because I know you have, there are probably more smaller entities that are, they may flip a home and then start renting them. I know you have those. Is there a way to do something with that for affordability?
I think that's a little bit outside the scope of the tax foreclosures this year, because there are only 29 properties and 26 homes, maybe. These are generally in neighborhoods that, where the, where the mix of housing is higher on the rental side, so providing opportunities for homeownership will be stabilizing to the neighborhood. That being said, you know, I don't, you know, there might be something.
Yeah, I guess, in addition to that, that's a good comment, we have lots that we've acquired from the city last year, and those have the 100% area median income restriction on them. So we're actually in conversations over the next couple of weeks with providers, rental providers, that are going to try to develop housing that will meet that. So that will be an additional tool. We also have two rental properties on our list this year, which will first be offered to home buyers under the general market, and then, and that's really an affordable housing tool as well. And then, you know, those would be rental properties, so we are.
Is there a way to tie affordability to those rental properties once they leave? I think, what I'm trying to get at is, how do we, long-term, make sure that we're having affordable rentals through the Land Bank as you're making those transactions?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess it's difficult in neighborhoods to do that with single-family homes where we want to provide homeownership. I think the opportunity exists for new construction, though, with those, with the land, and then obviously, we have a lot of nonprofits working on that with tax credits and so forth, but I think there's an opportunity in neighborhoods for new construction with that. Existing rehab of multifamily properties is very, very expensive, and that's the biggest hurdle with affordability, obviously, so, but we certainly appreciate your comments.
All right, I'm going to go to Commissioner Schaefer, and I'll see if anyone else has questions or comments. But just to, just to confirm, though, even the multi-units are being sold to individuals at 80% AMI or less?
The agreement requires that the Land Bank, consistent with their previous practice, list them for homeownership for 20 days. If they don't obtain an acceptable offer within 20 days, then they'll be able to sell those for rental.
Okay.
But we're prioritizing homeownership, affordable homeownership.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to, just from some of the commentary for us, to kind of what public purpose that we define in our policy here, so it's under Point C, and I think if, if you look at it, what the basics of it is, is really around, how do we get these properties to not cause blight, and, and to get back into the fact that it really stabilizes the values of homes, and then also opens it up to more opportunities. I mean, prior to this, you had to have cash, and we really didn't see, what we saw was kind of cycling through with maybe seeing this, this same address come through three or five years later. And so I think that our, our first thought was, how do we stop that and then allow them to work? So I, well, I like the fact that they're making every reasonable effort to have as much affordable housing in here, and that's part of what's here. I also don't want to tie their hands, because their main mission that we gave the Land Bank was to reduce blight, and was to go back and really put these properties back on the tax roll. And so we have seen some great benefits of homeownership through that, because it's opened up that, that market overall, but it, but it's also not fair to say each and every one of these needs to be a affordable housing project after it's done, or affordable house after. Most of them will be, and I think they're making every effort to do that, but it's also, I think, not fair, they can't continue on with, with their mission if they don't sell some of these like you would just if you bought, bought the property. So it allows them to, to do more by being able to be open. So I just, I just want to ensure that we're still open, it seems like the wording of this is, but just wanted to state that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Yeah.
And then Commissioner O'Connor?
Dave, do we, or does the Land Bank also help promote the home, or the down payment assistance program? Is that a tool that you would be able to use?
Yeah, we, our, we work with a Realtor that's well familiar with that. He represents HUD, and every transaction we've done in the past five years has always reached out to all the providers and made sure that that's available, MSHA, DPA, any interest rate reduction through MSHA, all the tools that are available, partnering with ICCF, making sure that families are equipped.
Right.
And that'll be more front and center this year. And the, and the lending institutions, too. There are specific lending institutions that partner and work directly with MSHA. So those entities have already been approached and will be, are working with them for the income qualification piece.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner O'Connor?
Oh, and I just, I want to piggyback a little bit on Commissioner Schaefer, that it is, I think, your primary focus is ensuring that, you know, you know, the hallmarks of the Land Bank has been returning additional value, and that there's that return on investment that they see in a neighborhood, that it has that stabilizing effect to the surrounding properties. And so ensuring that the properties go first and foremost, regardless of final use, that they're being, more is being invested in them to return a better investment for not just the property that, that we're selling, but to the, to the neighbors around it, and it having that, so that's, regardless of what the final use is. I do know, though, that the Land Bank has been a good partner with some nonprofit organizations who do work in the low-income rental segment, too. So I, I think it's, it would be bad of us to prescribe that something has to go to a certain use rather than let the market figure out what that best final use is for the property, let the professionals at the Land Bank do that, and then, you know, it will work itself out. And, you know, some of these are very challenged, and we know that, that the good things that the Land Bank does do is help remove those deed restra, you know, bad title, bad chain of title, environmental concerns. There are things that, there's a reason these properties sometimes end up in their hands, and so they have the tools at their disposal to make sure that these impediments to future success can be removed, and so that there's an opportunity to, to turn them back around. If not, they would continue to be, you know, an obstacle to positive outcomes in the neighborhood.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am in total agreement with the original intent of the Land Bank with regards to taking these properties and getting them back on the tax rolls. And I also feel very strongly about the need to do all that can be done to promote those housing units as affordable, simply because of the, the place that we find ourselves and in our beloved city, in terms of needing more affordable housing, and so I want to make mention of that. And also, want to probe a little deeper and ask about, to what degree is, is it been deemed acceptable by some of the nonprofit housing corps regarding the 18-month timeline? Do they feel as if that's more than enough time? Have you gotten feedback that there's more time needed? What is, what's the norm?
Yeah, I want to clarify that a little bit. The agreement requires that the Land Bank repurpose these properties within 18 months. Transferring a property to a nonprofit accomplishes that, and so there are times where, especially when federal funds are involved in a rehabilitation, it might take two years to complete a project. So our intent is to match properties with funding, so that if a nonprofit has funding, regardless of what kind of funding, if it's going to take two years, that's an outcome that we're willing to wait for through this agreement. And so timing can be of concern from time to time. I think that's why we want to particularly match properties with funding, so that we don't have properties out there without funding.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. I know it's always a balance, serving on the Land Bank Board, it's always a balance, because we hear from neighbors who, who are really eager to have the property redeveloped, and when it sits there for a couple of years, it's really frustrating to them, and they knock on the Land Bank's door about that. And so it is this really important balance that we, that we have. Two, two final thoughts, and then I'll call the question. Commissioners, if you haven't had a chance to read the MSU report that was done, it's really informative. It also breaks down the economic impact. Oh, you have a copy of it right there, I know all of you got a copy of that.
I have copies with me as well, if anyone.
And I, thank you. It's, it's a great report, really breaks down the economic impact of the Land Bank and provides good recommendations for moving forward. And then, secondly, I think what would be helpful for us is that we take a really close look at the impact of these additional guidelines, and for these 26 properties, and it'd be nice to have maybe eight months from now, a report back to the full Commission, just even to look at, did we accomplish goals with adding these additional recommendations and guidelines? Did we get better outcomes? Did we actually fill in a gap specifically to providing opportunities for affordable homes in the city? So maybe, David, you can think of that, about that at the forefront, how you track that, and then plan, once these properties are disposed of and sold, come back and provide that feedback to the Commission.
Absolutely.
All right. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, and Commissioner Allen will abstain.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you. Is he coming?
Yes.
Thank you. Should I wait and ask him?
It's like a game show.
Ask for an abstention? All right, I need to, I need to ask all those who abstain.
Aye.
All right. It passes.
You don't know what you're abstaining to.
Oh, that's a good one.
Yeah, we made a whole bunch of amendments.
All right, thanks, Commissioners. All right, so next that will take us to, I'll go to Cow, item number two, this is a resolution setting a monthly fee at Sixth Street Park and Canal Park parking lots. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support? All right. Mr. Narumore, you want to tell us about this?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So our department is requesting for City Commission approval to set a monthly rate of $58 to allow some parking at both the Canal Street and Sixth Street parking lots. So just a little bit of background, on June 1st, we closed the Monroe North parking lot, which is approximately 112 spaces, in order to start preparing that for the river restoration project and transferring of that property to the Parks and Recreation Department. So in partnership with Parks and Recreation Department, and as well as a lot of the North Monroe businesses, we've been doing a lot of outreach up there, mostly because of some of the on-street changes, but really trying to provide some short-term relief as we look for other longer-term parking solutions in North Monroe. So this proposal is to convert up to 20 spaces in both the Sixth Street and Canal Park surface parking lots. They're currently metered right now from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so the permits would just be putting a permit sign on top of a couple of those spaces. And so, right now, there's 66 spaces in the Sixth Street, Bridge Park, and 25 in Canal. And we're going to monitor the usage and report back in the next year and see, and see how it's working. And another thing to point out is, similarly like some other arrangements with the Economic Development Fund, as we recoup all of the expenses, any additional revenue will go into the Parks Fund for them to prepare for some asset management on these facilities that they're going to need in the next few years for some resurfacing and upkeep.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Kelly, who serves on our Parking Commission, I know that this was talked about there.
Yes, it was, and I just wanted the Commission to know that there is a meeting that is, it's being set up right now by Dieter Deering, who is the head of the Monroe North Business Association, to take a look at this parking question, and really about looking at development and all of the changes that are happening in that Monroe North area. There have been some changes since, in leadership, since Dieter got on. Before that, it was Howard Hansorn. And so, we want to catch people up to what we talked about three years ago, and update them on all of the new developments that are happening in the neighborhood, because that will impact our decision-making around parking. And so I want to say thank you to Josh for reaching out to so many people individually to work out solutions for them, for loading zones and so forth. This will be another solution to accommodate those who needed to park in that lot that's now been closed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I know, Commissioner Kelly, you've worked long hours on this, parking along North Monroe, so thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner?
Yeah, Mayor said one. It's probably too far to walk, but that other lot that we own in Monroe North, is that just too far of a distance to walk downtown? Because that one's not used that often, correct?
It is actually now fully leased.
Is it?
It is. The part of the, the construction project that's up there has kind of delayed some of the filling up of the spaces, but it's fully leased, and we actually just recently rerouted Dash North to go right next to it. And so, actually, we're fully leased in all of our spaces in the entirety of North Monroe for the first time in our history, so.
Great, thank you.
And Dash is still, is still going strong, which is good.
Good to see.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next, I'm going to jump us down to Committee of the Whole, Resolution, item number five. This is the resolution establishing the 2017 property tax millage rates. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Part four.
All right. Jeff, you want to tell us about this? We had a public hearing about this. He talked about how, for the city, the rate is less this year, but why don't you add a few thoughts before we have a discussion?
So, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm happy to be here today, presenting to you the 2017 property tax millage rate. As you can see in the agenda item, we are proposing a rate of 9.0258, which is a .0908 decrease from last year, and that's due to a headly rollback. If, due to the fact that your, or that the average taxable value in the city increased a bit, you're, an average typical homeowner will see a $14.22 increase in their tax rate just for the city of Grand Rapids itself. Obviously, there's other school taxes involved in that, but for the city itself, $14.22. And the average tax.
$14.22?
Correct, yes.
All right. Woo-hoo.
So very, very small.
That's true.
The average taxable value increased just over $2,000 this year. And as you said, there was a public hearing held on June 6th with some good comments, but this is before you today do pass.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, Commissioners, now, I'm going to jump us down to the Budget Ordinance, so that we can make sure we have time to talk about that before Commissioner Lanier has to leave. So this is our fiscal year city budget ordinance. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support? All right, it is before us. Jeff, you want to talk about it, or City Manager?
Just to say that all of the changes that you saw at last week's evening meeting have been incorporated into the documents that Jeff has provided for you.
All right. Jeff, take it away.
Sure. Good morning again. So it's hard to believe, almost two months ago, we released a preliminary fiscal plan, and there was a lot of good discussion over several meetings with all of you, and I think we've come to a great budget presentation here. On June 6th, again, a public hearing was held, which was last week Tuesday night, and state law requires that we adopt the budget within 10 days of that, so we're here to do that today. And you'll see in the memo, there is some changes from the preliminary fiscal plan. We did receive the grant, which added four positions in the executive office to administer that grant. There was one archive assistant added in the city clerk's office. We did receive the revised pension extrarial report for the police and fire pensions. We made those changes, which increased the budget about $340,000 in FY18. Those are included in this change. We've got the final numbers for some CDBG funding. Part of it decreased by $256,000, and the home funds increased by 100, just over $140,000. And then you can see, per our meeting last week, we came up with $1 million each and every year of the five-year fiscal plan for community and police relations, and you can see where those various items that made up that amount. And once again, as a reminder, as Craig said many times, that I think we're approaching $528 million in this budget for FY18, so.
All right, so let's open it up for discussion and feedback. I'll start by saying I was happy to see the CDBG and home dollars. I know all of us were really concerned about those initial recommended cuts coming out of DC, and I was pretty vocal and reached out to our legislators, and I know several of you advocated for those funds as well, so thank you. And I know a lot of community members did as well, so we're grateful to have them this year, and we'll continue to fight the good fight in DC to make sure that we have those into the future, because we know how important they are to our, to our city and to our neighborhoods. All right, so open it up for comments, questions, Commissioners? Commissioner?
I'd actually like to first thank Jeff for his work on this, his first time kind of leading the charge, and you did a really good job, and your response rate was amazing. You've learned from the best. We missed Scott. And to the City Manager for his leadership and his listening ear throughout this process. Jeff said it was two months. We think it was 12. It seems like it was a long time.
Feels like 12.
I just appreciate you making sure that you were asking questions, and the Mayor, too, making sure that you're asking for feedback from all of us, and trying to incorporate what it was that we were trying to accomplish with this upcoming budget, and I appreciate that, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Schaefer, your last budget with us.
It is, and I had to go out with a bang, right? So, thank you, thank you, City Manager, for making the changes. I think some of the things that don't always make it into the memo is, you know, first off, is that we're maintaining basic city services, and really responding, I think, to some comments that we've all had over the last year. One is, I mean, you've, if you've, you know, read the news, you see the backlog of tree work that we have. We are adding someone within this budget and a plan. So we're a little, little behind on that, but thankfully, this budget looks to address that. We've all received calls about alleys and cul-de-sacs, and how those need to get plowed and maintained. So in this budget, the manager has that worked out, where there's three additional positions there, so we're really amping up our ability to respond to basic services there. And I think all the work that we had done last week also said that there's also, beyond that, an issue with public safety, and also an issue with how we impact with citizens, and engage them and work on that. And so while there's more work, work to be done, we've moved around funding to really set aside a significant amount of money that wasn't initially set aside in this budget. Mayor, I know, over the last, you know, at least eight years that we've worked together, we've never found additional $5 million that we, that we moved around within the budget that we had. So I want to thank the manager and his staff for that work. And also, just to point to the fact that, that rate of savings that we have in those capital reserves set aside is a rate that we've been at in the past, and probably ultimately, given the projects we have, is not a spot that puts us in a tough spot. Because the other thing I think that's key with this budget is that we're also saving 25%, right? We have 10% budget stabilization, 15% fund balance. So if you, if you think about that, that's like a family household saving three months of expenditures. It's huge. So to have that, and to be able to do everything we're doing, really speaks to where we've come through as a city, and we're doing roads and parks and everything else that we have in our budget. So really, it's, it's hard to put all that in a memo and a message, but that's what I'm most proud of with this budget.
And I'm going to add to Commissioner Schaefer, it's hard to believe this is our last budget together. Eight years is a long time, and you've been an exceptional Commissioner. I want to say specifically, when it comes to budget, your expertise and knowledge has been so instrumental in helping us get to where we are today. So, thank you so much. You'll be missed in the future, so, thanks. All right, Commissioner Allen?
Yes, Chair of the Fiscal Committee, I just echo Commissioner Schaefer's comments that, you know, what we're passing here is a really smart, sound budget, similar to a good budget that a family would have with a proper amount of savings, and putting money away for reserves for important events that might come up. I would also echo that, I've said this during this entire budget process, this discussion process, which did start back in April, is that you can tell what's important to someone by looking at their checkbook. And so, what we've done with this budget is, is really significantly start a major investment in affordable housing through the Housing, the Housing Fund, and the establishment of the Housing Fund Committee, that's going to, an actual dedicated committee to oversee this process, and I'm excited to see that work go forward. Grand Rapids, like all major metropolitan cities in the nation, are struggling with police and community relations, and so we funded actually three major streams of funding for community engagement. There's surplus monies at the end of this year that our Fiscal Committee this morning allocated towards, towards safe and funding, safe recommendations, and then certainly the $1 million a year for the next five years for, for community engagement. And I, we've heard some whisperings from some folks saying, you know, "We don't trust you, we think that's all going to be funded for police." And I just want to echo again that we were very clear in our conversations on this last week, that this was a place marker that was going to be used to fund what the community, out of these community listening sessions, what they determined to be important. And so, we're going to take a balanced approach with that, and this is not some earmark for something that we know what it is down the road. This is truly a structural issue that we have to put in place as we move forward in this listening session. And last, I'd say, you know, we end fiscal year 2016-17 in very good shape, and I think we've placed ourselves to move forward in a very good place. And again, as with my colleagues, I really appreciate the robust discussion. The budget, as it was presented to us in April compared to where it is now, is significantly different, because we all heard things and gave input, and you and your staff made those adjustments even in the last minute. So thank you all for your responsiveness, and I'm very proud to present this budget to the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike Commissioner Schaefer, this is just my second budget, Commissioner Schaefer. And I have, I was pleased with the, with the end result. I want to recognize Jeff, but also want to recognize City Manager Sunstrom and the entire city staff for all of the work, especially the last-minute calculations that had to occur on last week, to get us to this place of being able to earmark dollars for something that is critically important, in my opinion. And I think that what the budget really shows is, I think, us as a commission really operating with a tremendous amount of foresight, which I think is very necessary these days. My hope is that we can just continue to use our dollars to leverage more, because of the size and the scope of some of these issues that we're facing as a community. And I do believe that a focus on really being able to tap into the voice of the Indigenous is critically important, because, you know, what is becoming more and more apparent is we have a citizenry that really wants to, that wants to be engaged, and that really wants to have a say in the direction in which we go. And I think that's extremely important, in that we're a government that should always attune our ear to the people. So again, thank you, job well done to, to all involved, and I look forward to supporting the budget.
Thank you. I'll go Commissioner Kelly, then Commissioner O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, too, want to thank you, Commissioner Schaefer, for your years of service and your eye on the budget, and challenging us, and opening up opportunities to debate. And, and I, and I also thank staff, Jeff, appreciate you. Scott's not here to say thank you, but I know we've had the opportunity to thank him and City Manager, as well as all the staff, and all the work that you've put into your A3s, Eric, you, too. All this time, and that continuous improvement loop that we are working on. In fact, I think that's something that we need to, to explain and tout a little bit more. I get questions about asset management from our constituents, so I understand that we're considering an article in WEARGR, which I think would be great to describe that. But I really want to thank the public, too, because as Commissioners have shared, the values that we express in this budget have really been expressed to us in the form of needs coming before us, whether it's through our own individual constituents or at our public hearings. And so we are investing in police, and in safe, and housing. We've formed an urban agricultural committee. We're focused on trees now because of the needs there, and our website, so that we can continue to have more robust community engagement. So I just want to thank the general public for coming and making their needs known. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. I, too, would like to thank Commissioner Schaefer for his, his leadership. He's been a great partner in the first ward, and a mentor, and a dear friend, and, you know, helped me really understand the, how this budget works, and how it relates to all things that go on in the city. So it's, your service will be dearly missed when you're gone. I do want to thank all of you, all my colleagues here on this table, too, for your commitment to funding our affordable housing funds, and the mechanisms in which we do that, which recognize that development is needed, but at the same time, we need to be a leader, not only in the city, but in the region, in trying to address the concerns of affordable housing, and that, I think we've came up with a very creative and elegant solution to, to make sure that we have a sustainable, long-term funding structure to, to ensure that we can put resources away every year as we continue to grow, that will, that will grow in a capacity to, to try to address the problem the best we can, and knowing full and well that we, you know, we are just a peace player in this big puzzle, but we need to be, provide our peace to that puzzle to the best of our abilities. So I appreciate all of you for recognizing that and your commitment to doing so. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Lanier?
I didn't get a chance to thank Commissioner Schaefer, and I know this isn't the end of the year, but since everybody else did, I feel like I, I feel compelled. If I don't, people may think. Yeah, exactly. I don't want that. So here's my comment. No, seriously, I really think that when we had the opening of the Indian Trails Golf Course, and this is odd that I'm tying this with you in a positive way, but anyway, on Friday, I talked a lot about legacy, as I was talking about Commissioner Elias Lumpkins. And I think about this, the allocation of $1 million each year to go to police and community relations issues, that's going to be a part of your legacy. And so, even though you'll be gone, every year that we're determining what to do with that $1 million, that'll be, it'll be like the Schaefer Fund. So thank you for your wisdom in trying to, you know, foresee some of the issues that we need to address, and coming up with a sustainable way to address them, and to the staff for finding the, the funding to be able to do so, so.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to add a few more comments before I call the question. So, so first, I want to just remind everyone that the budget process didn't just start two months ago, it actually started late last year. And leading up to the budget that was presented to the Commission, the City Manager actually spent quite a bit of time with Commissioners and getting feedback from all of us about priorities. And so all of us weighed in through January, February, and March, as the City Manager was drafting the original budget to present to the Commission, which was presented in April. So this is a, this is a, really an annual process. We take a little bit of a break usually in July, but then we, we get right back at it by the, by the end of the year. And so a lot of the priorities that are in the budget are, actually came from comments and recommendations from the seven of us. and recommendations from the seven of us. And I think the City Manager and City Staffs worked really hard to incorporate those into the budget this year. And we appreciate the work that was done on the front end, in addition to the changes that have happened over the last two months. So, I want to echo my colleagues and say thank you to the City Staff, to the City Manager, to Jeff, to Scott, who's not with us, to Eric, but also to all the department heads. I want to, I see both Chief Lehman and Chief Rahinsky out there. I know you all work really hard on your budget before it's even brought to us, so thank you. I know you have teams within your department that work on this. Thank you for all of your work. I also want to thank all of you for working so hard on this budget. I know that it's a lot of work, not just to read through the initial document, but then also to really work through the departmental budgets and have, we, I feel like we, especially compared to last year, our discussion was more robust, was very thoughtful. We spent a lot of time in discussion, more so, I think, than in the past. In addition to just hearing the information, we really actively engaged in those conversations. So, I want to thank all of you for doing that. And then I also agree that in the budget, you'll see our priorities as a body, and what you'll see is a deep commitment to public safety, to improving community and police relations, to affordable housing, to strengthening our neighborhoods, and honoring the uniqueness of every neighborhood, and to economic development. And there's a lot of other priorities embedded into all of those, but I'm really proud that we got to where we are with this budget through compromise. That's how good budgets are developed, and that took all of us working together, including the feedback from the community, which, again, didn't just come over the last couple of months, but really came throughout the year. And the recommendations, I saw every single recommendation that every Commissioner made to the City Manager, starting late last year, leading up to the budget proposal. And those comments that, that recommend, those recommendations that you provided came from your experience that you've had in the neighborhood, working with residents, knowing what the needs are in your wards. So, thank you for that.
Mayor, if I can make one quick comment, I just want to give a shout out to my staff. Thank you for the very nice comments, but it's really the staff behind the scenes, Scott Stainden, Keith Hybor, Molly Eastman, and Karen Mendez. They make it look really easy, I hope, to you guys, but they do a ton of work on the backend, so I just want to give them a shout out.
We know it's not easy. But thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so that's going to take us back up to item number one, a resolution authorizing certain special events subject to Chapter 53 of the City Code. Can I get a motion for that?
So, move.
All right, and Yvette Pittman is here to tell us about this.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, this month, the month of July, we actually have about 45 events that are going on, and that does not include weddings and equipment rentals. And so, you have that list before you, of the 45 events. We're very excited that we are adding some new events. Salsa in the Park will be Sunday, July 2nd, and we're very, very excited about that addition, as well as there's a Grantha Dindi Parade, which we worked with Experience GR, with a group that's coming in for a conference, and we've added a parade.
Mayor, I would just like to add, this is, I think, the second year we've altered our process, although it looks like this is a summer full of events. It is not, it's only for this one-month period. But these are the events that are seeking an exception to your current rules, things with noise, or hours, or alcohol, those kinds of things. These aren't even all the events, just the ones seeking exceptions.
Correct. Thank you so much for that clarification.
And Yvette, on our website, we have a list of all of the events scheduled?
Except for weddings and equipment rentals. We typically don't put those up, but yes, all of our events should be listed. We can only do about a two-month view with the way the website is set up now, but the new website that's coming, we will be able to put the entire year up.
Wonderful. And remind us again when we can expect that website? Soon, right? July?
Absolutely.
Okay. We are eager to have that. All right, questions, comments?
Well, I want to thank you, Yvette, for your hard work on this, and especially with all the exceptions. And unfortunately, our wedding crashers won't know when the weddings are, but I think that's wise to leave that off. Thanks.
It probably is. We've heard about some of those wedding crashers lately. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, Commissioners, that will take us to our last item before us today, and then also just a reminder that after Kyle, we're going to go into executive session for a couple items related to litigation and legal opinions, so don't run off after we get done with this item. So, we have a resolution adopting the Parks and Recreation Strategic Master Plan.
Salute.
Support. All right, and our Parks Director is here to launch us off on this item.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. David Markworth, Director of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation. Thank you for having us here today. We also have a number of friends and guests in the audience with us. I will be introducing them individually, but they have all been a part, a significant part of this year-long-plus-planning effort. And I thought you've heard enough from me on this planning effort and our team in Parks and Recreation. I prefer that you hear from them today as well. But we are bringing in front of you today the final Parks and Recreation Strategic Master Plan that was drafted with the community over the last 12 months. And this is a plan that was formally recommended for adoption by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their May Board, so that is a formal recommendation coming from that body. And as we've talked about this, this really is a, much more than a five-year plan that is required by the state of Michigan, though it has those components that are required to keep us grant-eligible and to allow us to leverage those important millage funds that we have within the City Parks Department. This is very much a plan that is a long-term vision for this city's park system, and we're very much looking at anywhere from 10 to 20-plus years in some of the recommendations that we have. This plan is a framework. It sets up Grand Rapids as a distinct community, something that we should be very proud of, and I think something that is historically present here within the city of Grand Rapids. But without further ado, I think I'd like to let you hear from our speakers first, and then we can address any questions or comments that you may have. But first, I'd like to invite up Shante Williams. Shante is with, I'm sorry, Mel Trotter Ministries. I had to look at you to remember. But Shante was a part of our Citizens Committee Stakeholder Group that helped to guide a lot of the recommendations that were drafted as a part of this plan, and I'd like her to speak to that end.
Great. Welcome, and thank you for all of your work on this.
Complete them first. Wow. Good morning.
Good morning.
As David said, my name is Shante Williams. I am with Mel Trotter Ministries. I'm a Corporate Relations Officer there and a very, and a citizen of this community. I live, actually live in the Third Ward. First, we want to talk about equity, and I do believe that our strategic plan for the Parks and Recreation Department highlights equity and inclusion for our community. When we talk about social capital, they, meaning citizens, our community, come from all over our community. Our players, coaches, referees, families, and friends join together each day to utilize the city of Grand Rapids green spaces. The Parks and Recreation Department has worked hard to ensure the benefits of participating in these programs, including new skills gained, the teamwork and the joy of competing with against each other, and new friends made at parks. Yet, the benefits of such changes have moved beyond the participants to the families and friends utilizing Parks and Recreation spaces. The community, which is our families, meet and greet one another, talk about weather, the game, and community events. As they connect with one another at many levels, they are in the process of building the social capital needed to increase the quality of life in our community, which is the direction of the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, promoting change within the Grand Rapids communities. Social capital refers to the collective value of all social networks, who people we know, and inclinations that arise from these networks to do things for each other. Researchers have determined that social capital is as important as economic capital for successful societies. Social capital encompasses such social elements as trust, social trust and inter-ethnic trust, connections with others, which is formal relationships, informal and informal relationships, and diversifying friendships, participation in politics, which Commissioners, I'm pretty sure you understand that, and giving and volunteering faith-based engagement and equality of civic engagement across our community. These alone highlight some multicultural programming audiences, therapeutic and inclusive programming, increasing access and recreation efforts for all, which is a huge component of our strategic plan. Our third point is connecting accessibility for all. By adopting the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, we begin to adjust the generational shift the city of Grand Rapids is currently under. Adjusting to the new demographics strengthens relationships in the community, which is what the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan announces. We can become more community, we can have accessibility for all, and we can all become one unit in the community, as they say, "You are stronger together and not apart." In my opinion, Parks and Recreation brings the community together, which impacts equity, which builds community, and makes all spaces inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Shante. Next, I'd like to invite up Rachel Skilis. Rachel wears a number of hats. Rachel is a member of our Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Rachel is also an employee of the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, and Friends played a significant role in helping us to create this extensive outreach process that we were a part of over the course of the last year. So, Rachel, I'd like you to speak, please.
Hi, welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. I mean, thank you for having me today. As David mentioned, my name is Rachel. I'm the Parks Alive Program Manager at Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, and I am also the Vice Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It is truly my pleasure to speak on behalf of the City of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation Department today, as well as its Strategic Master Plan. The Parks and Recreation Department has worked tirelessly for 18 months to create a comprehensive plan that accurately and honestly reflects the diversity of Grand Rapids and its park system. As a staff member at Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, I stood beside the Parks Department at a number of community events and saw how deeply the department valued each comment that came into them. Of particular note was the department's willingness to partner with existing events, like movies in the park, and support their efforts, instead of duplicating efforts by planning separate events. In each draft of this plan, more and more of the community's voice is shown through, and the final draft encompasses a truly comprehensive amount of feedback. A common theme in all of this feedback was a desire to have unique parks that reflect the characteristics of each neighborhood. I've lived in Grand Rapids for three years now, and Grand Rapids is fortunate to have so many distinct and diverse neighborhoods, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was pleased to see these neighborhoods and their park needs in the master plan. By including the unique ecological zones of the city, ideas for specialty recreation amenities, which was my favorite part, and each park's specific sense of place, this plan gives the department and the broader community a roadmap for diversity-focused, neighborhood-based placemaking. This plan holds up as a new standard for community engagement and creative strategy. This department and its remarkable staff have created a benchmark for years to come. I'm really, truly excited to see this plan impact and improve our park system. In addition to that, our Executive Director, Stephanie Adams, who is here today, has provided a formal letter of support that I have with me.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to share that with us, we're welcome, we're glad to take it, and we can put it into public record. Thanks. Thank you, Stephanie. And congratulations.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, Stephanie, as well. Next, I'd like to invite Lisa Butler up. Lisa is with the Urban League. Lisa has been an important player in helping us to think differently about the health of our park system and the recreational program offerings that we have and can and should be providing in the future, and thinking of those in terms of the health benefits that it provides for our community. Lisa?
Just for the record, David may have forgotten, it's actually night. Lisa night. It's okay. He'll pay me back later.
Yeah. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here today, and I want to speak from a place, a number of positions, as a mother, as a community member, as someone who is a community advocate, who works along a number of community partners here in this gray city. And I just want to talk about some of the benefits of this master plan and how it will affect our people in our community. I want to read you a few things here that talk about the power of nature in our lives and how it impacts our lives, as well as our children. The access to nature has been related to lower levels of mortality and illness, higher levels of outdoor physical activity, restoration from stress, a greater sense of well-being, and a greater social capital. Natural elements that promote well-being includes trees, diverse vegetation, local biodiversity, water features, parks, natural playscapes, community, and school gardens. The integration of nature into towns and cities is a secondary benefit that contribute to better health and more sustainable societies. The World Health Organization in 2008 put out a document called "Enclosing the Gap in a Generation," and one of the number-one things of the broader determinants of health was living conditions, which included healthy physical environments. I think in this place and in this time, we need to begin to have spaces available for our children to be able to play and have open air spaces. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be working alongside an organization that has provided tobacco-free parks and smoke-free areas, so that our children's health is improving. I'm thankful for the opportunity to be able to ride my bike through a local park and enjoy the beauty that it brings. I'm thankful for the opportunity to take my children down to the boat dock and throw bread in the water, so that the ducks eat it. I'm thankful for the opportunity that my children are healthy, that my grandchildren are healthy, that they ask questions about nature and about the birds, and about the trees, and about the grass, and the things that are before them. Without having these spaces in our community, our children lack the opportunity to explore, to grow, to reach into their future, to see beyond what may be before them, to think about what changes can be made. We want to have opportunities for our children, for our future, for the next generation, to live healthier, to be able to provide spaces for them to create, to be able to provide spaces for them to live healthy, to eat healthy, to provide for their friends and their neighbors, as well as nature that gives back to us on a day-to-day basis. So, I ask you to adopt this policy. I ask you to stand beside us to create a greater future, a greater environment, a greater community, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Oh, great. Thank you, and thank you for your service, not just on this, with this work, but in all that you do in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I think you're beginning to get a sense of the power of this entire planning process and effort. I'd like to recognize some special women from the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association. We've got Rosia, Maria, Blanca, and Elizabeth representing that neighborhood. They were also a significant part of this entire planning effort, particularly as we hosted Walk Your Park with Your Parks Director Fall Sessions last September. As we were down in Roosevelt Park, gathered with these women and several others and their children, we were talking through some of the basic park amenities and park improvements that could occur there, but it was this group of wonderful women that started to point us in a new direction. And they talked about the Plaster Creek and the lack of access to the Plaster Creek. We ended up scrambling down a hill to the Plaster Creek and fonderways down there alongside the Babbling Brook, and began to find a conversation that was very different than your typical park conversation. And that conversation had a lot to do with their native home, and how in their native home, they use spaces like this to gather together as a group of women and weave. And they found that to be a very powerful social opportunity and one that they would like to maybe see built into the Grand Rapids Park System. Those stories were crucial to forming the framework that we've got in this master plan and the recommendations that are coming out of it, and I'd like to thank them personally for their attention to that, and thank them for being a part of those important conversations. So, appreciate you being here today. I would then like to invite up Troy Williams. Troy is with United in Christ Ministries from the Black Hills neighborhood. Troy has been so gracious in connecting us to a number of the youth that he serves within the Black Hills neighborhood around a number of new planning efforts around Clemente Park and the improvements we're talking about there, as well as bike parks. So, Troy?
Thanks. Hello, welcome.
Thanks, David, Commissioners, Mayor. Again, I'm Troy Williams. I am the new Executive Director of United in Christ Ministries. We offer youth programs for kids residing in the Black Hills and Roosevelt Park neighborhoods. And I got to thank the GR Parks and Recs Department for even inviting us and involving us in the conversation. I can tell you how many kids were excited about just having their voices heard, the fact that they get to, that we get to survey them on a daily basis, but that someone from the city wants to hear from them on what could happen in their neighborhood. It's been truly impactful, so there's kind of a buzz going on in our ministry right now, and we're all excited about it. So, just wanted to tell you just a backstory about what we do. We offer Core Four programs. One of the programs is Pathfinder's program. That's our tutoring and mentoring program, and half of the students that we serve are students of CA Frost. You know, they attend CA Frost Environmental Science Academy, and their interest is obviously environmental sciences. So, it was interesting what we started to bring up and when David started to talk about the infrastructure and the green incentive to capture the water and the storm runoff from the hill, and how it would be captured under the field, you know? So, if anything, that would encourage a healthy conversation or a structural conversation with our kids on what happens in their, right in their backyard, and how it affects the community as a whole, you know? So, that's really impactful for us because it changes how we educate and what we talk about on a daily basis, because there's things in our backyard that are affecting them on a day-to-day basis. So, we're really excited about that, and just really creating a safe place for families. You know, my initiative at the beginning of my venture was to create a safe place for kids and their families to do ministry, you know, and that's something that I feel like is lacking in our community, you know? So, with Clemente Park, it's always a buzz there, there's always things going on there. But just the idea of something brand-new coming to our neighborhood, I think, is grabbing a lot of attention and encouraging families that, hey, you know, the city wants to know, what does that safe place look like? So, for us... But just the idea of something brand-new coming to our neighborhood, I think, is grabbing a lot of attention and encouraging families that, hey, you know, the city wants to know, what does that safe place look like? So for us, the biggest thing that I feel like is very impactful for us is our, one of our Core Four, which is called the Motion Initiative. That's our bicycling program. What we do, we teach kids road bike etiquette, stewardship, but we also take them on field trips. And one of the things that's lacking is that green space in Grand Rapids. So whenever we do our field trips and we go to mountain biking venues, we have to go out of the city for that, you know. So one of the things that we would love to see done, and what I think this is a big step in the right direction, is the fact that we get to, we get to work in-city and out. So if we can revitalize that park and start to connect it to a lot of the bike trails that are in the city, I think we'll start to see some positive traction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this.
I will preface this with, pun is intended here. In the spirit of not letting any grass grow under our feet, we are already taking action on our master plan. Unable to be here today was Duke Turley. Duke is from the Martin Luther King Park neighborhood. We have been working tirelessly with Duke to identify new ways in which we can engage our youth in the King Park neighborhood. And Duke has been an important part of that conversation and that process. Duke came to us about a year ago after coming off of the Safe Task Force and was speaking to the Parks Department about ways in which we can provide new recreational opportunities to keep kids engaged, keep them active, and keep them busy within the neighborhood. And Duke has approached us with a number of ideas that are coming from the kids that are working with him, the kids that are engaging with him. And we see that as probably one of the best ways for us to be embedding ourselves as a department within that neighborhood. Starting this summer, we will be hiring Duke as an employee of Parks and Recreation to deliver more recreational opportunities within the King Park neighborhood. And he will be working with two technical staff to help implement some of the programs that he has been sort of running ad hoc within the neighborhood, and now we'll make those a more formal process. So we're encouraged by that participation and encouraged by the support that we've got with Duke and others within the neighborhood. And then finally, I'd like to introduce a new fellow with the Parks and Recreation Department, Marie. Marie comes to us from the University of Michigan Natural Resources Program and is generously being provided as a fellow to the Parks and Recreation Department from the WAGI Foundation. This is a wonderful opportunity. This is the second year in which the WAGI Foundation has funded a fellow from the University of Michigan Natural Resources Program. In talking with the WAGI Foundation, they saw the focus on the environment and the focus on Grand Rapids' distinct ecological legacy here in the city and saw a nice fit for a fellowship position within the Parks and Recreation Department. This is one other way in which we are advancing the recommendations coming out of this plan. We'll be working with Marie to develop a natural resources guide and a program for us to follow operationally that allows us to make that shift in terms of how we care for our park system moving forward into the future, which is a big part of the master plan. But I'll let Marie speak a little bit about her background and the program.
All right, welcome. We are happy to have you, and we're grateful to WAGI Foundation. We won't hold you being a U of M student against you.
I'm actually a Michigan State student, so, but funded by University of Michigan.
Okay, well, that makes it all better. Now I really like you.
So I'll say, bujou ani, Marie Schaefer, Nishnabas, Ann Arbor, Michigan. So I'm Marie Schaefer from that other place, Ann Arbor, Michigan. But my dad is actually a third-generation resident of Grand Rapids. So I know Grand Rapids from coming here and visiting my grandma. So it's nice to come back and, you know, get to know this area in a different way as adults. So I'm Anishnabas Adawa from Michigan. So I'm coming from that perspective as well. And I'm a PhD student at Michigan State in the, go green, in their Community Sustainability Program. And, but growing up in Ann Arbor, so I kind of have both of those perspectives. There's a fight in my family every, you know, for football. But I am very blessed to have spent the past three years working, planning for climate change with the Sustainable Development Institute at the College of the Dominion Nation, so in northern, excuse me, in northern Wisconsin. So I'm bringing that perspective as well. And I also wanted to say, megwetch, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak today, but also for David and Joe and all of the staff who have welcomed me overwhelmingly to the department. And they really are a model for how to welcome somebody, but also for how to do collaborative work. So this has been amazing to be part of this and starting off my 12-week fellowship with them all. So thank you.
Thank you.
That is what we have. You have all been extraordinarily generous with your time and your support throughout this entire effort, and I want to thank you for that and request that you continue that support by adopting this plan formally today as well. So thank you very much.
All right, so I'm going to open it up for questions or comments. I'll start. So a couple of things. One, the plan that I read over the weekend, I think, is dramatically improved from the first couple drafts that I read. So thank you to everyone who worked so hard on addressing the questions and the comments and the feedback and the concerns that were raised from the first draft that we read. This is, I'm really happy with this document and the revisions. So thank you. Secondly, well, I have a couple of comments. There's a lot of objectives laid out in the plan, which I think is good. It's bold, and that's how plans should be. I have a couple of questions about next steps with implementation, but then also just affirming our commitment to work with our incredible partners throughout the community. When I read this plan and I look at the objectives, I don't feel like the City of Grand Rapids needs to do all of these alone. We can't do all of them alone. In fact, the only way that we're going to accomplish them is by working with our awesome community partners, and we have many of them, whether it's WEMAC or Friends of Grand Rapids Parks. So what I would like to see as we move towards implementation, similar to other plans that we have, like GR Forward, is who's taking the lead on what pieces. One piece that is a priority to me and has been ever since I was a Commissioner was also outlined in Grand Rapids, is adding green space in parts of the city that are deplete green space, which are often our most vulnerable neighborhoods. I'd like to see that be made a priority, and I think the only way we're going to get there is through partnerships with organizations. So I'm really curious about next steps with that piece. And I know that with some of my feedback with the original draft was, I want more specifics, I want better maps, I want more detail about where we need to add green space to make sure that every child is within safe walking distance to a park. So thank you for integrating that. So I'd like a few comments on that for next steps to implementation, how we're going to continue to engage our partners to accomplish this. And then my last comment is, I really appreciate the section on key performance indicators. So that is really good work, and I'm really glad to see that integrated into the plan. So those are all my comments and questions. If you want to answer those, and then I'll turn to my colleagues for their questions and comments.
Sure. Appreciate those remarks, Mayor, and appreciate the comments. Part of the reason that we wanted to invite our friends with us here today is because we wouldn't have gotten to this place without them. And we have every intention to include them in the process moving forward in terms of implementing the recommendations coming out of this plan. So that was another reason to invite all of them here with us today as well. To further that a little bit more, we've already been talking about putting together a team of champions, implementation champions. Don't know if that'll be quite the name, but something along those lines. The point is that pulling those partners together intentionally to begin addressing these priorities alongside the Park and Rec Advisory Board is going to be a key piece to helping us move forward with these plan recommendations.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
So David, you'll keep us updated on that?
Absolutely.
On progress?
Absolutely.
And maybe City Manager, we can make sure that we have more regular updates about the plan implementation?
Sure.
Thanks. All right, questions, comments, Commissioners? Commissioner?
Yeah. Mayor, I'll just make one, and thank you for everyone that came to speak this morning. I think what was clear is that it's one thing to host a meeting about an engagement that we have, and it's another thing to meet on-site at a park and talk about what is going to be there. And I think what you all have shared back this morning, and I think what's in this plan, goes beyond just what we see here. And I think that's what hopefully is the message, Mayor, to your point, to how we leverage more, is to say, listen, this is real, and what we're looking to do, you know, the nuts and bolts of what's drawn and what's funded, us and organizations need to make sure that we go out for a bid and get those things done. But it really starts off of, you know, discussion of how it'll be used. And so I really appreciate everyone's work on that because that's what makes this be so much more than just a planned document that we use to put funding at. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Allen?
I want to echo something that the mayor said. For me, when I look at a document or when I look at a process, I meant to say, so we entered into the strategic planning process. And when you look at the first draft, and then, to me, the gauge of how much we actually engaged, how I measure how much we actually engaged community is how much the draft changes. And it's significantly different, which indicates to me that it is true, genuine engagement. So I'm very pleased on that. And then the last thing, I remember, I don't know where any of you all grew up, but I remember where I grew up, the Parks and Rec Department was very important. And my mom always believed if you were busy, you wouldn't get in trouble. Somehow, I still managed to get in trouble, and I don't know how I did that. But, you know, we were involved in stuff all summer at various Parks and Rec, you know. I mean, all kinds of things, from baseball programs to, you know, you name it. And I think the day and age of government actually funding those things is probably gone. So I just want to emphasize the need for the public-private partnerships, utilizing our parks as a leverage tool. So like the work that you're doing with Duke and some of those kind of things. I'm encouraging what we're doing, but I'm encouraged even to find ways to do more because that's super-important. The partnership with the canoes and the river and the whole group that came to here, that's a really great example. And I'd like to, I'm looking, I'm not requesting, I'm looking forward to see more of that because I see that embedded in this plan.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you to all of you who came out on this morning and shared your story, and thank you for your time that you spent engaging in this work. Thank you to David for your leadership. And I am excited, I am the newest member of Friends of GR Parks on the board. And so I'm looking forward to being a part of carrying this work out. I'm also super-excited about the potential partnership with GRPS and the opportunity to grow our footprint even more with regards to green space. And Commissioner Allen had made mention of his upbringing and the parks. I will tell you that the parks play a very special role for me in that, growing up, my play space was the alley. And so there's, which was right behind my home. And so every opportunity I got to go to the park was a pretty big deal, even though the park was literally across the street. But my parents insisted that myself and my siblings be, you know, at a distance where they could watch us and see us. And so there's something about what we have, the precious real estate that we have in the city in which children and families can access and do so in a way that is safe and, at the end of the day, I think, very, very freeing. And so I'm looking forward again to the work and can't wait to be in a position where we can just, again, grow what we currently have. So thank you again, thank you again to all of you.
Yes, so funny, Commissioner. As you said that, I thought back to when I was a child, and I went to a park for peace and quiet to get away from my nine siblings. I didn't want to go there with them. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just think that this whole process is so amazing because it's been so robust in terms of community engagement, with starting with when we were struggling during the recession, that Friends of Grand Rapids Parks came along and that nonprofit was formed and started to help us take care of and maintain the parks. And then out of that came Neighbors for Parks, Pools, and Playgrounds. And I know Mayor, former Commissioner, and my partner, you were very engaged in that and making that happen. But it was a total grassroots experience, and so this is continuing to happen, and this is why we're getting such amazing results. So I want to thank you for your comments today that were so well-said about the importance of public space, particularly, I think, in a world where we have an increasing wealth gap, that we have a space to come together as people and that you are creating the shape and the look of that space and what it offers to the community. So Shante, Rachel, Lisa, Troy, and I know Duke is gone, but I've served with him on SAFE. All of you have done so much, and we really appreciate it. And Friends of Grand Rapids Parks and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, too. All the comments that you made on the draft were really helpful. To know that we have all those community eyes on this is just a huge sense of relief, and we appreciate that support. So thank you so much for all that you're doing in Roosevelt Park. Great work on your plan, your overall ASP, as well as your input here. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, I really appreciate all the work that everyone does. As a former member of the Parks Advisory Board, I know that it's, you spend a lot of time thinking very carefully about these things, and, you know, that's very passionate about our system, as we all are. And, you know, this is, they're all great community assets, and I just appreciate the thoughtfulness of the time and effort that went into all this and look forward to seeing continued improvements and increases in usership in all of our parks throughout the entire city.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll, last comment, I also want to just thank all of you for all of your work, not just on this plan, but really for everything that you do in the community. This plan truly is a plan that was created by the community, and I'm grateful for that, which I know takes a lot of work. So thank you. And then my last just recommendation is I know that this will tee us up to apply for MD and R trust fund grants. So I just ask that you give the Commission maybe a heads-up before those applications go in to give us some, an opportunity to provide some input, but then also to, that we're aware of it so that as I go to Lansing and meet with lots of folks often, I can put in a good word for our applications.
Very good.
So, yeah, all right. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
Thank you again for your support. And if I might ask, before everyone dismisses, if we could just get a picture with the Commissioners and our friends here? That would be greatly appreciated.
Do your work, David. Thank you. All right, so Commissioners, City Manager, did you want to introduce our new assistant to the City Manager?
I don't think he's here.
Or at least announce your decision?
Yeah, we're going to do that at your next meeting, but we have filled that position. I think you've all are aware of Asanti Kane, who joined us at Sweltering Stocking School last evening. So his first few hours representing us, he was perspiring heavily. So we're thrilled to have him here. He'll be on the sixth floor as well.
Okay, great, thank you. So Commissioners, now, I'm going to ask that we go into executive session. We have a number of items to talk about with legal opinion. And then also, we have our quarterly performance review for our city clerk later on this afternoon. So I am going to ask for the vote first to go into...
Who'll do that?
Yeah, let me do one thing at a time. And I didn't, I didn't know you wanted to talk about this here.
I have been every week for the last month.
Oh, okay, all right. I know, it just seems, okay.
Because I share it with you in advance, that's why.
Ah, okay. But it's similar to what you briefed all the Commissioners on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so first, let me call the question for executive session.
So moved.
Need a, thank you.
All right.
All right, and voice call, Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll go down to City Attorney's Office in the six oh room, or not, six oh one?
You win.
In the...
It's a photo.
Would it be okay if I just got a quick photo with everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sure.
In front, yeah.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Do we have a date change?
I'm not sure.
Let's get a photo first, and then if there, we still don't know for that?
Right.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think we can be in the back, because I know we're a little bit higher up. Or maybe right here, we can all come around.
That was, that was very, no, no, I, I know.
Commissioners, maybe if you all want to, want to come together a little bit? We're not adjourned yet, we're just taking a photo.
Yeah.
It's very confusing, John, sorry. I lost control a little. All right, Commissioners, get it.
Hopefully.
Three, two, one. Okay, one more, three, two, one. Okay, that's two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Working in photo services.
Thank you. Okay, so Commissioners, one last thing before we adjourn and head down to executive session. City Manager, anything you want to share with us?
I just wanted to give you a very quick equity update. We've had our first two community engagement sessions that I think all would characterize as being successful. We currently have three more scheduled, one this Friday, and next week, Monday and Tuesday. We are trying to figure out the best way to proceed with our currently scheduled Friday meeting. I also want to let you know that the topics that I originally announced for the Public Safety Committee, I had to swap a couple of them due to staffing issues, so that is available for you as well. Commissioner Lernier and I have engaged former Commissioner Eric Williams on the Know Your Rights campaign, and I think he's off to a good start. We are preparing answers to the questions posed both by the link-up meeting on May 23rd as well as all of the questions that are coming up from these community sessions, and we intend to post our answers to what I think will be dozens of questions by the time we're done on our city's website. And with that, I think you're fully aware of everything, as well as our audience of recent budget amendments and funding for equity issues. With that, I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on that? All right, we will now adjourn, and please proceed downstairs to the Attorney's Office for executive session.